All right. Good evening, everyone. The October 24th, 2024 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order, and we'll start with you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. By way of roll call, it appears as though we have Trustee Jennings, Trustee Cross, Trustee Ratan, Trustee Smith-Everett, and I am here as well, obviously. So we do have a quorum, and so we'll proceed. Next up on the agenda, just to keep things moving, awards and recognition, my favorite part of the agenda at every meeting, and Dr. Korb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, this is our favorite part every time.
Every time.
And so tonight, I am happy to be able to introduce to you Kate DeBonzo, and she is our Student Spotlight. Kate, if you'll come to the podium, she's going to share a little bit about her story and then answer any questions that you might come up with.
All right. Go right ahead.
Hi. Okay. So I grew up in Southern California, born and raised. My dad is first-generation American, first person in his family to get a college degree. He has a master's degree. My mom was the first person in her family to get a master's degree, so education was really important when I was a kid. When I was 16, I visited my uncle and aunt that live in Lawrence, Kansas, fell in love, loved KU and all that, so I decided that was going to be where I was going to go. And so just shy of my 17th birthday, I moved to Lawrence, Kansas. It was a big adjustment. I was 1,500 miles away from home. I knew nobody in Lawrence other than my uncle and aunt. My parents were getting divorced, and then my brother passed away. And there was enough going on in my life that I failed out of KU. I just couldn't focus on school. I had to get a job that was within walking distance because I didn't have a car. So I ended up starting to work at Walgreens. I worked in photo back when you developed film, then moved into the pharmacy. I've been working in the pharmacy ever since. Different location now, but I still work at Walgreens and the pharmacy. I started taking classes at Johnson County right around 2008, and whenever life allowed it, I would take classes. You know, COVID kind of threw me for a loop because work got really crazy, but on and off, I came to Johnson County. I served eight years in the Navy Reserve. My mom, dad, grandpa, you know, whole family in the Navy, so that encouraged me to do that and to help, you know, focus my life and see what I wanted to do. Johnson County Community College has allowed me to do so much with my education. I am doing independent research in microbiology. So right now, I'm working on creating a protocol that can be replicated that will allow crowdsourcing of maybe a bacteria that can break down a hazardous chemical that's a pollutant. So it's specifically TCE or trichlorethylene, and it's definitely a problem, especially around military bases where it was used as a metal degreaser. In addition to that, I've taken a lot of other classes here. I've been able to take astrobiology, which was really fascinating. I learned a lot. Freshwater ecology, which is a really hands-on, really cool class. And then next semester, I'm taking a biology class that will give me the opportunity to research biodiversity in Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands, which I'm really, really excited. It's like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And my goal is to go to KU and study like medical laboratory science. So you still use my love of the medical field, but then a little bit more of the science part of it. Yep, that's me.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing your story, and I definitely have some comments, but first I'll defer to my fellow board members and Trustee Ratan.
First of all, thank you for being in STEM. I love girls in STEM, and I appreciate and I can hear your passion about the research that you're doing. So are you going to do the STEM poster symposium?
Yes. And in addition to that, I will be going to a conference in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania in November to present my research. So it's called Abercamps, but I'll be going to that conference as well to show my research because I've been able to create like a protocol from scratch that hopefully a future like cure lab can use, so.
Wow, Kate, that is so impressive. I'd also like to add that I like that you have made a personal connection to your research with your saying that you're seeing this on a military base and that you are in the Navy Reserve. So I like that you've made it personal as well. And then finally, I like to say that I really appreciate that you didn't give up on yourself. You know, life gets in the way and things happen. You've had some major issues in your, you know, family, but you came back and you're coming back stronger from what it looks like. So I really appreciate that, and I hope more people can share your story more widely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're in the Naval Reserve. Did you say you have other family that was in the Navy?
So I did. I just got out of the Navy Reserve in April. I did eight years in the Navy Reserve. My dad, my mom, and my grandpa, my uncle, a lot of people in my family served in the Navy. I was actually, so I'm 5'3", but I was actually a CB, which is in the construction part of the Navy. So most people look at me and they think, oh, she couldn't have done that. But I find a way to make things work and.
The uncle I'm named after was in the Navy. I had another uncle in the Navy. My brother's in the Navy. I tried for a commission out of KU, and I'm legally blind in this and I couldn't get a commission, so I had to settle for being a trustee here.
Almost as good, right?
Yeah. And I appreciate you working so hard.
Thank you.
And thank you, Trustee Smith-Everett.
Yes, Kate, you have an incredible story. I actually have a lot of personal connections to you. I lived in San Diego and taught in National City and got the opportunity to be on USMIMIT as a teacher and learned so much about the impact of the Navy in Southern California and how incredible it was. I echo the same thoughts as Trustee Ratan about not giving up on yourself. It really occurs to me, you've got grit, you've got perseverance, you've got tenacity, and you fit a category that we would, you know, if we were looking at data, you would fit under our non-traditional students. And what I think is incredible about non-traditional students in your story really exemplifies is you bring with you a lived experience that some of our fresh-out-of-high-school students haven't had yet, right? That lived experience gives you great focus because you know what you know. You learn things along the way and you bring that with you. I am sure you have made our institution, our research, Science Department, better because you have brought that with you. So thank you for being here. And I ask most candidates that come in our Student Spotlight, we really are focusing on belonging here at Johnson County Community College. And with all the success you've had, how do you feel like belonging has worked for you as a student at our institution?
So on one hand, it's kind of hard as a non-traditional because there's a lot of differences that I've been in. I'm almost to the point where I'm old enough to be their parent, so it's a little, it's a little weird. But I take almost that mentorship role and help, especially if I'm doing my microbiology research and I'm walking through the lab and someone has a question and the professor's busy. Usually, it's something that I can help and teach them, and everyone just has a passion in there and loves it, and it's like a little community of scientists in there. And so I do feel like there is a connection, even if it's a different connection. It's not on the same level. It's kind of like a mentorship level where I can help them and encourage them and everything. And there's actually a girl in one of my classes that is just turned 19, and she was talking about how she doesn't know what she wants to be when she grows up and all that. And I said, at 19, you don't have to know what you want to be when you grow up. So you just take some classes and see where life takes you, and if that's what you love, then go for it. Because that's what I did. I took microbiology. I loved it, and I just went down a rabbit hole and kept researching, so.
That's awesome. Thank you for sharing your story. And also, I'm 5'2". Little people can do great things.
The worst thing anyone can say to me is, do we need a man to help us? And I said, no, 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 we'll figure out a way. We'll get the tools. We'll figure it out.
That's awesome. Trustee Jennings.
I won't say a lot, but you honored your parents who showed you what education was about, and you followed that path. And then your aunt and uncle allowed you to continue that path, and even though life got in the way, you can have continued that path, and good for you. My husband was a naval reservist for 28 years, and I know that it helps you become who you are.
Definitely.
And really helps you be independent and live the life you want to live. So I just really appreciate and honor you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. First of all, thank you for your service. As a fellow veteran, I understand how important that is, and so I thank you for that. You know, I tell people it took me 20 years to get my bachelor's degree, so I followed a path similar to yours. I think non-traditional students have a special place here at our institution. And you know, I do a lot of speaking about diversity and inclusion, and we often think of diversity in terms of protected classes of people. But you are the quintessential example of how diversity at our institution changes the way students think, because you bring to the table the life experience that they've never had. And I love it that you tell them you can always, you don't have to know what you want to be for the rest of your life. Now, my family tells me I've reinvented myself enough times, and I probably need to know by now. But at 19, you don't need to know. And I think it's one of the most important gifts that we can give young people is you can change yourself and reinvent yourself. You have found your passion, and how wonderful is that? And I think, you know, we celebrate here at our institution developing lifelong learners, and clearly, you fit that mold perfectly. And you learn because you want to, not because you feel like you need to. And so what you bring into the classroom, to the students that you interact with, goes way beyond what you're studying in the book or on the PowerPoint. So thank you for that and thank you for the gift that you give to our college. And I'm confident you're going to go on to do great things, even if you are about a half foot too short.
Well, thank you.
So thank you for that. All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. It is now the time in our agenda for the open forum, and I will read through my little script here, although I understand we do not have any registered speakers. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly-scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, and in that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly-scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. There are no registered speakers for the open forum. That is still the case, correct, as far as we know? All right. And so that will close the open forum section of our agenda. It takes us to board reports, and we will start with Logan Grigsby and the Student Senate Report.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Distinguished Board. It has been an absolutely crazy, busy, but fantastic, exceptional month to be a student senator. First off, we have elected three new student senators, Dana Castro, Sheena Jacko, and Joy Singh, which brings us to a total of 13 senators and a full five-board exec board team. We have also elected our entire vice chair team, so that is four vice chairs. For budget committee, we have elected vice chair Leah Seid. For service and fundraising, we have elected vice chair Tony Wong. For public relations, we have elected vice chair Oliver Gonzalez. You may know his sister Apuna and his older brother David. I am sure he will be here in my position next year as they apparently have a dynasty.
A tradition.
Yeah, they have a dynasty going on.
[laughing]
And lastly, for rules and conduct, we have Melinda Kilpatrick. We just wrapped up club re-registration. We have 42 active clubs on campus with a few new ones in progress. On Monday, we will be voting for the volleyball club. If you guys ever are out here during the day, you see tons and tons of kids out there playing volleyball. They have officially banded together and are starting a club, and we could not be more excited for that. We have approved several new budget requests through the Senate, including DECA's Leadership and Development Conference, which they leave tomorrow and come back Saturday evening. That is in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Dia de los Muertos, or the Day of the Dead, which is ran through our Luna Club. That will be Wednesday, 10:30, so the day before Halloween, and Calm atrium from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We also have Model UNs travel. They are traveling to Chicago, November 23rd to the 26th for their Model UN conference, as well as St. Louis, February 19th to the 22nd. They are a wonderful club. They always come back as award winners, so they are sure to make our school proud as always. After that, we have IDSA, the Interior Design Student Associations. They, every year, they have the annual Kansas City Symphony Designer Showhouse Project, where they go and they are assigned a room in a house, and they have four or five students professionally design this room. This is something they've been doing for 30 years, 30-plus years. I am told nothing but great things. They almost always win awards, and we are very well-known around the interior design community thanks to this project. So I am super happy about that. International Club, if you are not familiar, they are one of the bigger clubs on campus. We approve their funding for their city tour in which they go down to Kansas City. They go to the Nelson Atkins. They go to the River Market and have lunch. They go to the World War I Museum. It's a fantastic way for international students and local students who maybe are not super familiar with Kansas City to go down, explore the city, network, meet some amazing friends, and have some, hopefully, good food down at the River Market. And our last one that we approved is the Animations Clubs trip to the Lightbox Expo in Pasadena, California. That is also this weekend. They are leaving Friday and coming back Sunday. I am not completely familiar with the Lightbox Expo, but I know that it is a very great, very great time and experience for them to learn more about animation. I know Disney goes, Pixar goes, video game studios goes. So it's a really great way for them to network, meet people, and be in the community. From there, JCC Gives donations link has opened. You can find that through Get Involved. I believe we have around 20 nominations so far. This is one of the biggest things for Student Senate throughout the year. We love to give back to the community, give back to our faculty, give back to our staff, and give back to the students who may not have the ability to provide for themselves or their family for the holidays. We are working with that. We are having our JCC Gives Market Wednesday, November 13th in the Calm atrium from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So if you love baked goods and you love giving back to the community, please come check us out for that. We have approved our new and improved constitution. We've updated some grammatical errors, the number of signatures required for returning senators, and added verbiage for mid-semester elections to help better define the requirements. Last weekend, our executive team and a senator traveled to Kansas City for the Student Government Association's annual meeting. This was a fantastic opportunity to work with colleges in the region, build our leadership skills, and learn so much more opportunity. We learned that we want to be more involved with clubs and organizations across campus. We want to help build out our leadership skills. We learned that we are going to start making a newsletter of students' issues, and we're going to publicly try to address at least once a month students' issues and what we're doing to address those issues and how we're going to alleviate those issues. Further from that, we're discussing the possibility of making an exec board position that specifically works with mental health and how they can improve our mental health resources across campus. These are still in the early phases, and we still have a lot of things that we'd like to talk about with that, with SGA in general. However, if I were to talk about it, I would keep you guys here all night. Lastly, we have Trick or Treat for Kids, which is going on right now from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., so it is currently started. I urge you all to come down and check it out if you have time. If the meeting ends in time, I'd love every one of you to see the hard work that Student Senate has put into this event and really show how much passion and how much hard work that every senator shows for this, for the school and for the community.
All right. Thanks so much, Logan, and thanks for giving me motivation to get done with the meeting before 7 o'clock. All right. Any questions for Logan? Trustee Ratan.
No questions. Just you've done like a semester, like you've done a lot of work in the last month, so.
Yeah.
I'm just taking notes on all the things you've done. And so, wow, thank you for your leadership and the rest of the senators.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Helps keep my hair in when I know I'm appreciated.
Trustee Smith-Everett.
I wanted to echo similar thoughts. Your report was really thorough, and I really appreciate it. It's hard at our level to always know what's going on, and this time of year, there is so much going on. So you really highlighted that, and kudos to you for being that thorough. It's very intimidating to come up here, and thanks for taking the time to educate us. I had something else that I can't remember now, so that's it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Trustee Jennings.
Thank you, Logan. I have two questions.
Absolutely.
So the first is, I missed the date on the JCCC Gives Market. When is that?
Wednesday, November 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Calm atrium.
Okay. And then, can you tell me a little bit more about some of the initiatives you're working on in regard to the mental health?
Absolutely. So we're still kicking around the ideas. That's why we would like to form an exec board position and a committee so they specifically can be in charge of going around and figuring out best ways that we can do it. But we heard some very good ideas, such as friendship benches, which would be designated benches for students to go to if they're looking to make friends. They could go and sit at these benches specifically to mingle and meet people. From there, we've had the idea of suggestion boxes and going around kind of canvassing and getting feedback from the students, because ultimately, at the end of the day, the best way to figure out the solution is to talk to the students.
Thank you so much. That's awesome.
Thank you, and thanks, Logan. It's always wonderful to hear about how engaged our students are and how much is going on around the campus. And you do a tremendous job with your report. Thank you for not generating it with AI. I feel like when I hear these things, I often hear the same words over and over again, and that's not the case with your report, so thank you for that.
Mine may have grammatical errors, but that's how you can tell it's not by a robot.
That's all good. That's all good. So thanks for your leadership and thanks for delivering, again, a thorough report. Thanks so much, Logan.
Absolutely. You guys have a wonderful rest of your evening, and hopefully I'll see you at Trick or Treat for Kids, Calm atrium until 7:00 p.m.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
All right. Next on the agenda is our college lobbyist and the wonderful Dick Carter.
Live and in person.
Yeah, live and in person. How cool is that?
Well, my report wasn't generated with AI, but it is some of the same things that you do here from time to time, so I apologize for that. I think I'll spend a little time talking about budgets, the budgeting process, and how that whole conversation is moving forward. Last month, I introduced the topic that the legislature was getting serious about, taking over the budget development process, so much so that this, just yesterday, at the Legislative Coordinating Council meeting, the legislative leadership folks that make up that committee developed a new interim committee that will have eight Republicans in the House, four Democrats in the House, eight Republicans in the Senate, and three Democrats in the Senate to begin the development process for the budget, which will be talked about for FY '26 when the legislature convenes in January. The conversation that continues to go on is there's really no statute that prohibits them from doing that. The standard practice historically, since I've been doing this for many decades, is that the Budget Office, which is the Governor's Budget Office, develops budget recommendations that then are vetted by the House Appropriations Committee, the Senate Ways and Means Committee, and then the various distribution budget committees that oversee more of the specifics of those agency budgets. I think that's where we get into some of the interesting thought process about how this moves forward. The speaker already said that it'll probably be a rough rollout, and I think that his words are probably accurate. And anytime you start a new process that happens fairly quickly, I think that that's probably a fair statement. What do the state agencies that answer to the governor do when they're in front of a budget committee and they're talking about a legislative budget which is inconsistent with the recommendations that have come from the governor's office? And so I think that's one of the first, when we talk about a rough rollout, I think that's one of the first things that we'll see is what does that look like? To that end, the Board of Regents doesn't always consider itself a traditional state agency, and I think that's a fair assessment. They are not necessarily a traditional state agency. They have a regulatory board that certainly oversees the state universities and is to give guidance to the other institutions that fall under their umbrella. But I think that we've even seen with the discussion that we've been talking about for the past month or so with regard to things like the 1% administrative fee that they might assess, that conversation is now no longer on the table. They're not planning on assessing the institutions, that 1% fee, at least not presently. That conversation has moved beyond that. But things like, that we probably should be aware of are issues related to things like the performance agreements and perhaps maybe the board staff enforcing issues that have already been in the performance agreements in the past, but maybe related to things like developmental education and moving into a co-requisite model. That could come with penalties in a non-tiered formula sense to the two-year sectors throughout the system if they don't offer the coursework that meets those requirements. That is a conversation that is frequently had in the State House in a number of different committees with regard to students arriving on campus with or without the appropriate study qualifications for whether it's math or reading, things like that. So those are conversations that I think we'll be watching very closely that are all part of that budgeting conversation that we don't really think about in the traditional sense of going before a committee, advocating for a budget, hopefully that you get that amount or you defend what you have and move forward. So that's a big issue that we'll be looking at with regard to the budget models moving forward. How about some good news? Kathy Wolf-More, former state legislator, was appointed to fill the seat, the unexpired term of Cynthia Lane on the Board of Regents. That's good news. She's familiar with higher education. She's been with the KU Hospital Authority for a number of years, was the ranking member on the House Appropriations Committee. I see this as a good move for all of higher ed across the state of Kansas. Twentieth day numbers are up. You've already probably seen the press releases that have gone out, specifically here at JCCC. Head count is up 9.5%. We're still not pre-pandemic levels, but that's exciting to see that type of increase. And many of the institutions across the state, not all, are experiencing increases that range along those percentage marks, up to 10%. We're pretty good at 9.5%. Not everyone is that high, so I feel very good about what that trend looks like as we move through this academic year. Some more good news. The governor's office has announced that they're waiving childcare licensing and registration fees through 2025. There has been some level of relief in that area since COVID relief dollars have been in place, but that is a direct savings to the Herstiner Child Development Center. And so we recognize those savings and the benefit that comes with that, whether it's background checks, fingerprinting, actual licensing fees. Those will be on hold at least through the 2025 calendar year, so that's good. And then finally, you can call this good news if you want or bad news, I don't care, but we've got an election coming up, and it's going to be interesting. I don't think we'll know the results of some of the really top-level races for a day or two. I think it's that close in a number of states. What we're watching more closely are the down-ballot races that are impacted by folks coming out to vote. We'll certainly see We'll certainly see some change, we think, in Johnson County. I think that we also have a new Senate seat, and so that is a seat up for grabs that has never been around, or House seat, rather, has not been around. And so I think that it'll be an interesting process moving forward, especially in light of the conversation that I started in a report with related to the budget development. You're going to have at least 25% of the House, there's 125 people in the House, so I'm not going to do the long division up here at the podium because I'd get it wrong. You're going to have 12 new seats in the Senate, and all of those folks are going to be drinking from a fire hose, trying to figure out what budgets look like, what is the model that they need to move forward with, what are the amounts that need to be appropriated. So that's a huge learning curve. But before that even happens, we're going to have leadership elections. I don't think we change leadership, but that happens the first part of December. And so all the legislators will come to Topeka, and they'll elect their Senate President and the Senate Leadership. They'll elect the Speaker of the House and the House Leadership. And likewise, and then we wait for committee appointments to be made, and then they get their offices, and we start on January 13th. It's a little bit of a late start. Everything seems to be flowing late this year. Thanksgiving's late. That means there's not a lot of time between Thanksgiving and Christmas this year, at least as far as when you look at things on the academic calendar. And so likewise, the legislature is starting a little bit later than they would normally as well. It's still the second Monday of the month, but it just happens to fall on the 13th of January. So I think I would stop there, and we'll hope for the best on November 5th.
All right. Thanks for your report. And questions for Dick Carter, and I'll start with you, my vice chair, Trustee Smith-Evert.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Dick, is the budget development codified in legislation? I'm missing the, is this just the initiative of this past year's legislature? Is this a new approach that was just created, or is it codified somewhere in law or policy for this to be done through the legislature instead of through our budget?
I would have to look and see if it's statute or a constitutional plank, but the Governor is required to submit budget recommendations. It's then the legislature's obligation to approve a budget. It may or may not look like the recommendations that came from the Office of the Budget, but it's also in their purview to develop their own budget if they see fit. In many ways, that already goes on. There's conversations that happen in the budget subcommittees or between state agencies and the legislature when things change or are different or issues come up in between the time that budget requests were submitted to the Governor's Budget Office and the time that the legislature meets and begins that process. So I hope that provides an answer that tracks well, but it is certainly not outside the purview of the legislature to develop their own budget. And if they want to vet it side by side with the recommendations that come out of the Governor's Office, we'll see. I think it will be interesting when the CFOs of the state agencies, the cabinet-level agencies, appear before the budget committees, and they know what the recommendations are that are coming out of the Office of the Budget. They work for the Governor, and so I think that will be interesting to watch. We don't know how that's going to unfold.
I guess that's, I'm trying to find out what the motive, if it's just educating, what I remember from last month was you mentioned that the legislature is trying to get better about being in the budgeting process and being more hands-on with it. That is my two cents of what I remember from last time. Clarify, that's wrong. I guess what I am hearing is it's more of them driving, and my concern is putting politics into the way that things are funded in our Kansas institutions. Am I off on that?
No, I think your assessment is fair. I think you're always going to see politics come into play on different legislative items, whether it's tax policy, whether it's this agency or this arm of an agency should get this amount versus a different amount. So I think that comes into play regardless of who develops and submits the budget. I think what we'll now be seeing is a fight between a Democrat-led administration and a Republican-led legislature. I think that's a fair assessment without going into any, I mean, we don't really know exactly what that's going to look like, but you can kind of see that play out already with some of the policy discussions.
Well, I just, I appreciate that. Thank you for clarifying for me. I'll just get on my soapbox real quickly and just say, elections matter. For anybody watching, anybody here tonight, the entire Kansas Legislature is up for election. These decisions are more important than maybe anything else on the ballot for your day-to-day. And the Kansas institutions that, when I started on the board, were so grossly underfunded that institutions were clawing and fighting for nickels and dimes to keep operations going. And we owe it to Kansas citizens to put people in those positions who will do what's best for the majority of Kansans, not put politics into the way that we decide who gets funded. As a public school educator, I can speak firsthand to what happens when you're not fully funded and the decisions that are made and sacrificed. And I just, I don't want to go back to the era that was there when I came into office. So I appreciate you always giving us enough information and helping us infer some of the other information that will have an effect right here at this institution if we don't have good people in place to make good decisions. So I will leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Trustee.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment, and thank you. I appreciate that. So again, as a public educator, you know, our future are our students, and it's so important to adequately fund our educational systems.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, and I just want to echo what Trustee Smith-Evert said, and that is the importance of voting. You know, we can't gripe about what happens if we haven't asserted our right to vote, to put the people there that are going to speak our voice. And, you know, without sounding like I'm getting on my soapbox, there are places in the world where people would give anything and do, lay down their lives for the right to go to the ballots, and have done so in this country. And yet, it seems like voter turnout is never, never the voice of most of the people, right? So, man, go to the polls and vote. And I heard somebody say the other day, "Well, I live in Kansas. We all know how it's going to turn out, so why even bother?" Well, not exactly. And so I think it's important for everybody to go vote, speak their voice. I agree that it's those local elections and state elections that are perhaps most important to what we hold dear here at the college, and so, and thank you for your report.
Trustee Cross, did he have a?
Trustee Cross, did you have something?
I was slow in raising my hand. I thank you, Madam Chair. I think you said it, and I just wanted to say, there is a lot of goodwill, I think, in all the people who are elected, and I've found odd allies in people I haven't supported and frankly don't agree with. But what changes do you foresee, Dick, in the county? You said you expect there to be changes.
Well, we have a couple of open seats, and I think that there are some races that are being targeted, certainly by, when you look at the numbers, and I didn't bring the percentages with me tonight, but inside 435, you're seeing more Democrats being elected in Johnson County. And I think that you'll still see an effort to, at least with a few specific races, to put some money in, well, there is money being put in those races to try and change the seat. And so ultimately, if you're wanting to change a supermajority in the House or the Senate, it only takes a couple of seats. And so I think you could see some of those types of races play out. There could be even some surprises that we're not even anticipating. And that's the other thing, you know, we think we've handicapped a lot of the races, but there's always that element of surprise that you're just not expecting that ultimately can change what the makeup of the larger body, you know, the 40 senators, the 125 House members, look like. So a supermajority is over 84 in the Senate, or in the House, rather. And I think we would need three, I think we need three in the Senate to break up the supermajority, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So whether that's a moderate Republican, or whether that's a Democrat, or whether it's somebody that votes different on the issues depending on what they are, I think that's really what we're talking about is.
I had a jury trial earlier this week, and I'm a bit out of it with other things in my life, so I appreciate the perspective. And I'm hopeful in supporting many of the things that you just talked about. But however it turns out, I'm reminded of a story Governor Carlin had in southwest Kansas, I think in either liberal or Aircar in the early 80s, and a farmer pulled him aside and was reading in the riot act about taxes and all the money they were sending to Topeka. Governor Carlin, a farmer, dairy farmer from north-central Kansas, turns around and says, "Somebody's got to pay for this. Somebody's got to pay for these roads, bridges, and schools." And I think what I'm getting at is it's been an urban, now suburban, rural alliance because many of our Republican and rural friends need help with their schools. They need help with their infrastructure. And I certainly agree with the Trustee Smith-Evert's sentiment that we need to vote for the people that are going to do the most good for the most people. But however this shakes out, there are alliances to be formed and people who need money and help across the state, not just in one county or one, we can't feed, house, clothe, or educate everyone in Johnson. Like, we have to look for our neighbors here, so. Thank you. I'm sorry to ramble on.
No, you're welcome. Anybody else? Perfect. Well, thank you, as always. Safe travels back to Topeka. All right. Next on the agenda is the College Counsel report, Jason Arnett. Good evening, Jason, and welcome to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I typed into ChatGPT what my board report should be. It gave me eight pages that I lost somewhere, so you get an abbreviated bullet point list.
Fair enough.
College Counsel met on October 9th. We got a briefing from Cabinet on the audit plan, which the least informed person in the room asked what the audit plan was, and it's to make sure that we're in compliance with all the relevant entities, which is right on. That's what we do in dining, so we appreciate that. ABC expressed, or Academic Branch Counsel, expressed their appreciation for our change to the shared governance page, so they were very happy to see voices, not votes, go away. We also heard from staff afterwards. They were like, "Yeah, we meant to get to you, to tell you, but anyway, we're happy." So that's good. ABC is also working through some issues, and they may have already solved them, but they're working with some issues to post their minutes so that they're more up to date. We got our student senators seated last time, which is great, and they informed us of their voter registration efforts, which is spot on, right? I agree with all the ideas about voting. We should all vote every time. So Staff Counsel told us about their upcoming, now passed, town hall that happened on Tuesday, and we had 72 people attend that virtual town hall, so that was really great. The big news is that we got our draft report on communication, which came from an anonymous submission into Staff Counsel in May of 2022, and it talked about lack of respect for staff, overall poor communication from the college, lots of laundry list of complaints. That got sent up to College Counsel in the fall. We deliberated over it there. We formed a subcommittee in January of '23. We did our work during the year, and then in last fall, we had focus groups across campus to follow up on our research questions. And now we have a report in hand that tells us what people are thinking about communication at the college. The report talks about the findings and how they relate to the mission, vision, and values, including themes of communication barriers, which are many and varied. You wouldn't think there were, I learned a lot about that, concerns about technology, overall participation, transparency, and trust. We came to some conclusions and made some recommendations. There are 30,000-foot view things so that hopefully everybody can see something in one of the recommendations that they can do to help improve communication at the college. Everybody's in this together. It's the part-time barista, it's the vice president of whichever branch, it's, everybody has to work together to make sure that communication improves. Now, our plan to communicate about communication involves, we're going to present to Cabinet next month for feedback, and we're going to go back to ABC with it and Staff Counsel, get all that feedback so that we can finalize our draft. And then we'll talk about recommendations to the managers at the college and management topics in November. And as Mr. Carter pointed out, there's very little time between Thanksgiving and Christmas, so we'll roll it out to the campus at large in January during professional development days. So that's the plan, and that's the report I have, unless you want me to go find the ChatGPT.
No, that's okay. I appreciate the to-the-point version. Thank you very much, Jason. Any questions or comments for Jason?
Thank you.
Trustee Smith-Evert.
Sorry, everyone, tonight. I apologize.
No, you're good.
I enjoy your questions, so please.
Well, good, because I got some. So will, so this is a topic that I think is really important to our board. Because it's been a pattern of complaints and issues since I've been on the board, which is five years and 10 months. So I would love for that final report after you've met with Cabinet and you all have it, even if it's just some of the highlights, to come through our committee process, maybe our employee engagement committee so that it gets back to us. I'm particularly interested in just like a handful of specifics of what kind of things we are going to change or put in practice as a means. I think it allows our board to understand, like you said, you learned a lot. I think for our board, that's really critical, too, because, like you said, part-time barista would not have thought of that, right? Janitor, we often think of like the vice president level, but it's really critical when you're an institution of this size that we do have communication in multiple ways so that everybody gets that. And I'm just thinking forward with our next president. That will be a critical component, right? So knowing sort of what you all have already put in practice will help us as a board guide our next president, and I'd really appreciate being able to be looped into that whenever you guys get there. Thanksgiving, after Thanksgiving, whenever, you know, whenever it comes. So thank you. I really appreciate that, you being really specific about that process and where you guys are.
Yeah, happy to do that, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. I agree. I would be interested, too, in hearing, just hearing, so that we're apprised of what that ends up. I also wanted to mention to you, Jason, you're one of those people who I consider a convener and a collaborator. I love the way you always talk about, "We all just need to work together, and if we all work together, we can make this happen, and we can make wonderful things happen." So right. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for everything that you do, and thanks for your report, minus the ChatGPT.
Absolutely. Thank you for those kind words. I appreciate that very much.
You bet. Thanks, Jason.
Thanks a lot.
All right. The next report on the agenda is from the Faculty Association, and I believe we have Irene Olivares here. Good evening.
Good evening. Irene Olivares, the Vice President of the Faculty Association. I will provide a fairly brief report today. I do want to talk about three things and also touch on the developmental education component that Mr. Carter mentioned earlier. I want to highlight some of the faculty-led study abroad programs. I also want to talk about an event that the Faculty Association will host for our students in the Center for Future Educators. And then lastly, I will give a brief report on a recent event hosted by the Journalism and Media Communications Department. So I wanted to begin by highlighting some faculty-led study abroad programs. Faculty are going to Mexico, Ecuador, Japan, and Iceland this summer. May especially will be a busy month for faculty leading these programs. In the course Exploring Biodiversity, Professors Gideon Nay and Nancy Holcroft Benson, both professors in biology, will take students to Ecuador to investigate biomes in the Andes Mountains, the Amazon Rainforest, and the Galapagos Island. I think this is what Kate was mentioning earlier. This is, the second year this program is being offered, and it serves advanced biology students. I believe Professor Nay might address the board next month, so you can ask Professor Nay more about this. In the course Spanish and Service in Mexico, Professors Luz Alvarez from Foreign Languages and Beth Gully from English will take students to Guadalajara Jalisco to work on Spanish language acquisition, learn about Mexican culture, and complete a service project in Las Pintas, which is a community out and complete a service project in Las Pintas, which is a community outside of the city of Guadalajara. I'm from Guadalajara, so that's an exciting trip for them. In Arts and Culture in Japan, Sheila Philip, Professor Emeritus in Theater, and Don Gale in Philosophy, will take students to Tokyo, Hiroshima, and Kyoto to experience ancient and contemporary culture in Japan. Moving to the month of June, in the course Craftsmanship in Italy, Catherine Group Interior Design and Shari Leicher Business Office Technology will take students to Rome and Florence to visit historic art and architecture, and to tour contemporary workshops and showrooms. This is the second time that this program has been offered. In July, Jay Antle, Executive Director of Sustainability and Professor of History, and Catherine Nold, newer professor in Geosciences, will take students to Iceland to study the island's unique geology and sustainability initiatives. This is the fourth year for that program, so it tells you the popularity for this particular, these particular topics. I want to thank Jeanette Jespersen, Coordinator for Global Engagement, for her help in highlighting these projects. Moving on to the event that the FA will host for students who are working on becoming educators in the pre-K through twelve public education system. As you most likely know, the FA is part of the Kansas Chapter of the National Education Association, more commonly known as the KNEA, and the National Education Association, known as the NEA. The KNEA and NEA have a program called Aspiring Educators, and this program supports students in the educator pipeline with mentorship, scholarship, and leadership opportunities, and support with conference attendance. The FA and KNEA will host an event to talk about this program with students here at the campus who are currently taking education classes. This event will take place November twelfth from two to three-thirty in RC one seventy-five, and you're all welcome to attend if, if you're available. This event is an example of the work that the FA does to support student success on campus. My third discussion point. On October seventeenth, the Journalism and Media Communications Department hosted the first annual jamboree, journalism jamboree for students. The event included a panel discussion and a meet, greet, and eat event with JCC professor Mike Humphrey and local media professionals like Mata Rose Williams of the Kansas City Star, Laura Ziegler of KCUR, and Ryan Hennessy of KC TV Five. At the event, students and panelists tackled the question, why does journalism matter? Professor Dani Alexandra, the FA secretary, attended the event and provided some of his notes that I share here with you today. One of the themes that folks discussed at the panel included the importance of ongoing community engagement that facilitates the ability to be able to gain multiple perspectives when reporting on issues and stories in our community. Professor Mike Humphrey also noted the importance of the art of listening, not only for journalism, but also in teaching and learning. And Professor Mike Humphrey is, I believe, in his first year here, and he's starting a Student Media Publication Club organization, so that's something to look out for. More than sixty students attended this event, and the Journalism and Media Communications Department hopes to make this a yearly event. It happened in the co-lab this time. And Professors Michael Price and Dani Alexandra provided notes for this report. And before wrapping up, I do want to mention that faculty who teach our developmental education courses have been concerned about the recent K-Board changes that warn about the state potentially doing something with funding for the institution if we continue to offer developmental education courses. And I know the FA, the FA knows that college administrators are working to understand how this is going to apply to our institution, how this is going to look on the ground for the classes that are offered at our institution. And I want to thank Dr. Singh, VP of Academic Affairs and CAO, for a meeting with FA leadership to keep us in the know about what's going on. And I hope that communication continues. And that's all for my report for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Trustee Cross, was that a stretch or a raised hand?
I was trying to lift my arm over my paper. Sorry.
Okay. Any questions? Trustee Smith Everett.
I have never asked this. It has never occurred to me. We do all these great trips. How are they usually funded? Or students have to self-fund them?
There's scholarships available, but I'm probably not the best person to ask. Karen Miller, the Director of the Office of Global Engagement, Jeanette Jespersen works with the, the global, the study abroad programs. I know they're also working on study away programs, which include trips within the country for students who might not want to go necessarily to an international location. So that's something that the Global Engagement Office is working on to provide different types of opportunities at different costs for students. But I know there's, there's certainly scholarships available.
Okay. Yeah, I'm curious about that, on how the funding works for them to be able to go, or if they have to raise, you know, scholarship only pays for part of it. And then my follow-up about that was about how many students we have travel through these different programs, because some of them are incredible. I feel like you all need chaperones. Can you relay back that there needs to be, there needs to be chaperone slots? Because I know some volunteers that would like to go to Italy.
Trustee chaperones.
Italy, yeah, there are quite a few that I think we definitely need chaperones for. So, yeah. Thank you so much. I really appreciate every time you or Andrea come. You guys really give us such a great spotlight on different parts of this big place. So, thank you.
I just had a couple of comments for you. Thanks, thanks for your report, first of all. I, I want to be a student here and participate in these study abroad programs, because some of them sound really phenomenal. And I, I just wanted to comment, you know, I, our students are so fortunate to have those opportunities, because travel abroad gives you perspective like nothing else can. And some of the unique places that we go, and what we do while we're there, provides our students with insight into things that they might otherwise never get to experience. So those are wonderful opportunities, and kudos to our faculty for making those things possible. I wanted to ask you, with respect to the KNEA/NEA program and trying to get people into the educator pipeline, obviously, this is a, a problem across the country, but particularly in Kansas, trying to get folks channeled into K-12 education. As I'm sure you're aware, there is a future educators program as part of the Olathe School System. It's at Olathe East. I think there's probably something similar in the Blue Valley School System, where high school students who have that sort of passion are channeled into specific classes. I hope that we're finding ways to coordinate with those programs to get their students interested into just kind of continuing that journey with JCC. I, I think there have been mixed results with some of those programs, with getting staying power with the students who come here, or another institution, staying that course of being a K-12 educator. And anything we can do to continue to highlight the importance of the work that's done to keep those folks in the pipeline is, gosh, time and effort well spent. So thank you for reporting on that.
And I want to give kudos to Dr. Craig Butler, who does lead the Center for Future Educators and all the work that he does, bringing students from the K through twelve system who are interested, to be able to expose them to the college and the resources we have for them.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the report from the Johnson County Education Research Triangle and Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you very much, Madam Trustee. The J-Cert Fund received $2.1 million in sales tax in September, and $732,000 was distributed to each of the three university entities, which is, for a grand total of $6.3 million, has been distributed to each of them year-to-date. My next, my next J-Cert meeting is actually on Monday. As a reminder, our, we have a position on the J-Cert Board as oversight for the three-cent tax that was put in place years ago, twenty years ago, I think, fifteen years ago? I don't remember. Greg Musall always remembered exactly how.
Twenty, that makes me sound, that makes me sound.
It was about 2007, 2008.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Well, we're getting close to twenty. And we are part of, the role that we serve is we are part of that oversight board. And so we will go through the full financials for year-to-date at Monday's meeting, and I will have a thorough report next month about that.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions about the J-Cert report? All right. Moving on, the KACC report and Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. KECT did not meet this past month. We last met at KC KCC in August. Our next meeting will be on December sixth and seventh at Levette County Community College in Parsons. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Cross?
Nope.
Moving on, the Foundation report and Trustee Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had, have several things going on at the Foundation, so we are very excited to announce that Some Enchanted Evening 2024 has exceeded $1 million in gross revenue. And there's a reminder that Some Enchanted Evening is November ninth at the Overland Park Convention Center, and individual tickets are now on sale for $250 a seat. And for more information, you can visit www.jccc.edu/c2024. Johnson County Community College Foundation staff attended the KC Regional Conference hosted by MCC. The event was focused on sharing best practices with higher education institutions across the Midwest region. JCC Foundation staff and a member of the college IT staff attended a week-long conference in Seattle hosted by Blackba, Blackbaud, our donor database system. The conference was full of information that will help us improve donor relations and fundraising outcomes. So they're kind of renovating their whole system. Exciting news, JCC Foundation partnered with the JCC Retirees Association to build a fundraising campaign to help build their endowed scholarship. This effort raised $20,000, and their endowment is now just over $50,000. The plan is to make this an annual campaign. The Cohen Community Series tickets will go on sale November twenty-eighth. We are thrilled to host Lee Bryce as the performer this year. We are expecting a sold-out crowd and a special VIP experience, including a meet and greet with the artist. Concert will be held on March first, and new this year, there will be a, there will be sponsorship opportunities to help ensure that the event exceeds income from past events. The Foundation hosted a special lunch with Stephen and Karen Clegg and their scholarship recipients on October seventh. The Cleggs donated $78,000 this past year for direct scholarships, and they plan to double that investment for the 2025-26 school year. JCC, JCC Foundation is thrilled to announce the Hudson Foundation approved a $50,000 grant to support the Nerman Museum and Midwest Trust Performing Arts Programs. We have had a long partnership with the Hudson Foundation, but they haven't contributed since 2019. So we're happy to welcome them back and look forward to continuing a strong partnership. JCC Foundation will partner with the Nerman Museum and the JCC Fashion Design and Merchandising Department on a unique fundraiser on May tenth. A match made in heaven. Katherine Bernhardt times Jeremy Scott. A match made in heaven brings together contemporary artists Katherine Bernhardt, born in 1975 from St. Louis, Missouri, and American fashion designer Jeremy Scott, born in 1975 from Kansas City, Missouri, both known for their creative work that engages with themes of consumer and popular culture and irrelevant humor, creating a dynamic pop culture extravaganza. They are two elite artists working in disparate mediums who transform the mundane into the spectacular. This fundraising event will transport participants into a vibrant world of pop culture through food, fashion, and art. The event will start at the Nerman Museum, and the event sponsors and VIP guests can also attend an off-site after-party. Proceeds will support the Nerman Museum operations and art education activities and the JCC Historical Fashion Collection Preserve. And again, that will be on May tenth. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Trustee Jennings? I want to take just a moment to give a plug for the Midwest Trust Performing Arts series and programs. I, I attend not as many of those as I would like. I happened to attend one of those events this past weekend. It was a Chicago Blues band that performed in the Polsky Theater. It was phenomenal. I watched one of the band members, who is ninety-four years young, make me feel like I really just need to work out. But every show I've gone, and I try to take people who are not generally on campus for things, because I find they're always surprised at the quality of our programming. So if you've not attended an event there in the recent past, golly, I'd encourage you to do that, because everything I've seen there has been truly, truly phenomenal. So that's my shameless plug for the Midwest Trust Performing Arts series. All right. Next on the agenda is committee reports and recommendations. First up is the Collegial Steering Committee meeting. The Collegial Steering Committee, Committee met in the Sunflower Room on October third, 2024. As I'm sure all of you know, the Collegial Steering Committee is really an opportunity for folks to bring things forward, concerns, ideas, in sort of a brainstorming collaborative meeting format. There was no exception this time. We discussed a couple of items I'm going to mention just briefly. And when I say discuss, I mean, we tossed around ideas, concerns, thoughts. The first of those was with respect to the Senior Scholar Program and some ideas about what we might be able to do with folks who are selected as part of the Senior Scholars Program, and some ideas came forward. Specifically, we talked about things related to curriculum development and whether there's something we could do there to sort of tap into the experience of those folks who might participate in the Senior Scholar Program. The other item that we brainstormed and discussed has been touched on twice already, first by Dick Carter, and then again in the, in the Faculty Association report, and that is some recent activity at the Board of Regents level related to dev ed courses and the transition to a core requisite model, and the potential ramifications, consequences, effect that that may have here on our campus. I know that our administration is working hard to stay abreast of what's going on in that regard to make sure that we're doing the best we can for student success, and at the same time, certainly taking into consideration the interests and concerns of our faculty and others within the community. And so that concludes my report. Any questions? All right. We got that seven o'clock trick-or-treat thing.
Yeah.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Employee Engagement and Development Committee, Development Committee report and Trustee Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll talk really fast. So the Employee Engagement and Development Committee met on Wednesday, October second, 2024, at nine forty-five AM. There were some great things that were presented, which I'll share with you now. So the first item of business on the committee was the HR two monitoring employee benefit programs. So Ms. Christina McGee, Vice President, Human Resources, provided an update on the employee benefits program. She highlighted the importance, she highlighted the open enrollment dates of October eighteenth through Monday, October twenty-eighth, and indicated there would also be a benefits bear this fall. Ms. McGee also communicated that the shared governance groups inquired about the college being closed on Monday, December twenty-third, 2024. After careful consideration from Cabinet, it was determined that the college will be closed on Monday, December twenty-third of this year as a paid holiday. Please note, this is not a recommended date of closure on an ongoing basis, and is only for this year due to the remainder of that week being the beginning of winter break. Ms. McGee also presented, excuse me, presented information and the recommendation relative to the Juneteenth National Independence Day federal holiday. Should this change be, should this change to the academic calendar meet with the approval of our Board of Trustees, it would be in effect January first, 2025. It is the committee's recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to add the Juneteenth National Independence Day federal holiday to Johnson County Community College's holiday schedule effective January first, 2025.
Seconded.
I so move.
I have a motion by Trustee Jennings, seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. You may continue.
Thank you. Second item of the committee business was human resources, monitoring human resources and employee engagement strategies and initiative. So Ms. McGee provided an update from the Office of Human Resources. The HR department was, with the assistance of outside facilitators, held a team retreat last week where they spent time establishing the vision for the HR department, determining priorities, goals, and focusing on stronger relationships together. A report from the facilitators will be forthcoming that will help HR in building an action plan. I will also just add to that, that I was told that they all had real similar visions. So I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a really strong department. Ms. McGee reported two job openings exist in the HR department. Reviewing applications and interviewing are underway for the Compensation Manager and the Director of Human Resources. Ms. Rachel Hayes, Director of Employment Engagement and Development, provided an update on the Years of Service Celebration, which occurred in August. Over 300 employees were honored with service awards. Rachel also reported favorable feedback has been received from the Employee Picnic held on September 13th. And I can just say, from what I heard, I wish I would have gone. Over 500 employees were sent in an RSVP, and over 600 people attended the event. Rachel reported her department is conducting professional development classes, employee orientations, and a new staff mentor program. In addition, wellness, nutrition, and financial sessions are available for employees to take. The department is working on a 12 Days of Wellness program for December. And she also reported that these programs have been very positively received. Ms. McGee reported that staff evaluations have gone out, guidelines have been updated, and that HR are using the new, a new form and tool. Trainings are being offered to supervisors to highlight department changes. Christina also shared that HR department developed attendance and progressive discipline procedures. The Employee Relations Team is providing training to supervise on the procedures this month. Additionally, HR is assessing ways to obtain more employee data via exit and stay interview surveys. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions? Comments? I just want to give a shout out to Christina McGee, our Vice President of Human Resources. Golly, did we choose that one well. Thank you for all that you do. And obviously, it's a lot because we just heard your name like I don't know how many times as we read through there. So thank you for that. Moving on to the Management and Finance Committee. Trustee Hamel was unable to attend this evening, and so I believe, Trustee Cross, you're giving that report?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting at 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. The information related to the meeting can be found on pages four through 10 of the board packet. Reports included those from the Management and Finance Committee. The Management and Finance Committee received the following reports from staff. A report from the JCCC Foundation on its annual report. Joy Ginsburg, our Executive Director, provided a report on the JCCC Foundation Fiscal Year 2024 finances, program support, and fundraising activities. Fiscal Year 2024 was a strong, was strong for the Foundation with an increase in total revenues and assets. She also highlighted the SIPs and Scholarships Event, which included a video from a student scholarship recipient. This year's Some Enchanted Evening Gala will be held on Saturday, November 9th, as we just heard. There was also a report regarding information technology. Robert Caffey, Vice President, Information Services CIO, along with Philip Mine, Executive Director, IT Security, provided the Quarterly Information Services Report. Mr. Mine, and please tell me I'm saying that right. Is that right? Because I don't think Rachel would say anything, but Judy would. So I was just checking. Mr. Mine presented information on October regarding cybersecurity awareness and that month's activities, identifying protections and their importance, as well as AI-powered cyber attacks. Mr. Caffey reported on the phone system update and other initiatives that Information Services has in process. Megan Casey, an interim Vice President/CEO, presented the preliminary budget calendar for fiscal year 2025, '26. No significant changes to the budget timeline or process are expected. Recommendation for approval of the 2025-26 fiscal year budget guidelines will be brought to the board at the December 12th, 2024 meeting. There was a progress report with respect to the capital acquisitions and improvements. Tom Hall, an Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facilities Plan, we have the longest titles here. I mean, is that, do we just hand those out? Provided the monthly progress report on capital infrastructure and improvement projects. The Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening. With respect to procurement reports and recommendations, Jim Fiker, Executive Director of Procurement Services, reviewed five bid recommendations and one single-source recommendation. With respect to the Facilities Master Plan Update Services, it is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed cost from BNIM in the amount of $268,656 with an additional 10% contingency of $26,866 to allow for possible unforeseen costs and for a total amount of $295,522, and ISO move.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett.
My primary question is just clarity of what the value that this will bring to us, getting an understanding of what BNIM will provide for us that we couldn't do on our own, basically. And I wasn't sure if you could answer that, or Tom Hall could answer sort of what this...
As far as the process?
Yeah. And what having a third party do? Because we have a, I mean, we're just finishing up our Facilities Master Plan that we had before. And, you know, we always know what kind of things we are working on, but not really necessarily setting a vision for the next scope. So are they setting the vision? Are we setting the vision? Like, how does that work, I guess?
Yeah. We're going to work together to do that. And we did engage with a professional services firm last time, so this will be a similar process to what we went through in 2016, 2017. So there are three primary things that they'll help us do, that we couldn't do on our own or internally. They're going to help us assess kind of the current state of things, right? So we'll take a look at our space utilization data and our capacity to kind of evaluate where we are. And then we'll do some visioning exercises, if you will, based on priorities that we have established already through our strategic plan, our academic master plan, and our enrollment management plan, to think about where we're headed next, right? And then from there, we will develop options and potential strategies for implementation, along with they'll help us with some really high-level or conceptual cost estimates. So we should have a completely updated plan for consideration by the board by late summer, early fall of 2025. And all of that work will be informed by lots of, lots of input, lots of listening sessions, town halls, surveys, social media campaigns, all of that, to get input from campus constituents. So faculty, staff, students, board, community members, we'll engage as many people as possible in the process.
That's kind of what I was wondering is like, is this just, because we're kind of in this strange space right now, right? Where we have this fabulous interim president, but we've been really clear that with our next president, we're going to set a clear direction. And so I wanted to make sure that that is woven into this process so that we're not making a plan, then we get, we decide between us and the new president, we want to do this initiative. And it's like, well, too bad, the attorney's already left the station on the Facilities Master Plan that we had developed. So it'll be woven in because this is going to be a long process getting to that point. Okay.
This is really going to be the input and kind of the gathering of information stage between now and about June 30th, so right around the time that the new president is on board, we'll have some, some things to consider.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Trustee Cross.
So if I may, Vice President Lear's, like, and I hate to be that guy on a talking head show repeating what was just said, but they're going to help us think and brainstorm and come up with ideas.
Correct.
Okay.
Very simplified, yes.
When are we going to put the words back up on the walls? Because I feel trapped in this blank space. Do you know?
Squirrel.
We haven't talked about that, but we certainly can.
You said space utilization. I'm dialed in.
That's signage and wayfinding. Yes, that's on the list.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Signage and wayfinding. Well, just to kind of dovetail on that, I mean, I suppose from, from my perspective, the importance of something like this is to have somebody who's able to convene. I mean, we have great people in this institution, right? But, you know, you can take all of the Chiefs players and put them on the field, and there's some great talent out there, but if you don't have the offensive coordinator, they're not going anywhere. So I, I mean, it's a way to, what I found interesting about these bids is how much disparity there is between the low bid and the high bid. And I always look at that and think, huh, I wonder why that one was way up there. But I, kudos to our team for finding someone who's going to be able to fulfill all of our requirements and meet all the criteria and still save us a lot of money.
Madam Chair, one other thing, if I may.
Yes, go right ahead.
Oxford language defines clarity as the quality of being coherent and intelligible. Number two, the quality of transparency or purity. And I first thought Trustee Smith Everett had used that word incorrectly, but I just wanted to comment and compliment her on the correct utilization of that word, so timely.
Awesome. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. You may...
Madam Chair, the next item on our agenda is with respect to the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art, NMOC-A, Microcosm and Restoration. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the cost from ACI Build Group in the amount of $414,738 with an additional 10% contingency of $41,474 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total amount of $456,212 in ISO move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion?
When did we start using NMOC-A?
Is this a rhetorical question?
No.
Okay.
I'm citizen oversight. Like, when did we start doing that? That's, that's awesome. I'm going to whip that out and see if they can know what I'm talking about. NMOC-A. No, no further questions, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. You may continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item on our agenda calls for a recommendation regarding collection services. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposals from NCM, National Credit Management, for an estimated base year of $97,162 and a total estimated expenditure of $485,811. Throughout the renewal of options from Williams &amp; Fudge for an estimated base year of $107,958 and a total estimated expenditure of $539,790 throughout the renewal options. Is that also with Williams &amp; Fudge? Right? I so move.
Not going to get out of here to trick or treat if we keep this up.
Second.
This wasn't my idea.
Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion? Is Williams &amp; Fudge the name of an attorney firm?
Not to my knowledge. This is a, a collection agency.
Okay. Well, lots of times lawyers do this sort of thing.
That's just great. Halloween.
Found a different name for my law firm. But, all right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. You may continue.
Madam Chair, the next item on our agenda calls for batting cages. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the bid from R&amp;R Concrete in the amount of, I won't slow down at the numbers so nobody accuses me of rushing through the numbers, of $160,000, $160,12,000 with an additional 10% contingency of $16,001 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total amount of $176,013, and ISO move.
Motion made by Trustee Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion?
Go Cavaliers.
Take more pitches?
Right. I mean, I would emphasize, our student athletes are just tremendous asset to the institution and a tremendous asset to their career development as well. So batting cages, good with that. Any further discussion?
I just think it's interesting, $16,001.
Well, we either made it up or somebody's on us.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Are we just about finished? I think we have...
Two more.
Two more. All right. Go right ahead.
Madam Chair, the next item on our agenda calls for roof recovery for the OCB Building. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the bid from Delta Innovative Services in the amount of $317,152 with an additional 10% contingency fee of $31,715 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total amount of $348,867 in ISO move.
Motion made by Trustee Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I feel compelled. I think Trustee Musle used to always throw this in, like, our administration and professionals at this college spend a great deal of time going through and figuring out who, putting out bids, putting out RFPs, screening and analyzing what's good, what do we need? And then we had a committee meeting on October 2nd, and we've reviewed and analyzed this. And so this may seem a formal rubber stamping process, and it is, but that we vetted this and that we all trust the process and our professionals in place. So I firmly support what we're doing, and I just wanted to lay that out there so that when somebody runs for election next year and there's that person running who's accusing us of just passing massive budgets and not paying attention, that all of you who are running can reference this. No further discussion.
Well said, Trustee Cross.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Yes.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. One more, I believe.
Finally, Madam Chair, Trac CNC Computer Numerical Control Mill and Lathie.
Lathie.
Sorry.
Sure. It's a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to Eichmann Sales Associates for $179,235 in ISO move.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion? Yes, Trustee Smith Everett.
I wondered if anyone here can answer for me. How many CNC lathe machines do we have?
Maybe Dr. Singh?
Making you jog tonight.
I don't think I can give you a number, but I can tell you we have two full labs, full of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, in the WCMT building.
So, so you don't know?
I don't know the number, but it could be 25, 30, I would say.
Okay.
I was kidding.
What warrants needing a new one?
So I don't know if you remember, we were going to start the Machining Technology Program, so we have a grant for that. We could not start that program because we could not find a faculty. So we asked the federal government to see if we could use that funding to fund some of our existing programs. So right now, so this equipment would enhance what we do in automation engineer technology and our welding program.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I will just say, I spent a year learning about this, and lathe is what makes those little cylindrical metal things we have on zippers and we have in all kinds of mechanical operations. And lathe operators are a hot, hot job right now that is really heavily needed. And so anytime this kind of machinery comes up, I'm always in awe of how expensive it is and also that we are able to provide the opportunity for our students, apparently in many different ways, so that they can be readily employed with the skills to be able to take these really great jobs. So that concludes my comments.
All right. Trustee Cross.
Where did you learn that to add to your area diet portfolio?
I worked for my brother who staffs those positions. And lathe, lathe was the number one position that we could not get filled. one position that we could not get filled time and time. And there are dozens of companies in Kansas City that need lathe operators that are in metal, the metal industry primarily, and they cannot find the people to fill them. And they start generally at $35 an hour.
I apologize, Madam, and I apologize for any insensitivity. Insensitivity, I appreciate.
Oh, no, that's fine. That's perfectly.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Cross, for your report. And thank you for standing in for trustee Hamel.
You're welcome.
And delivering that report. We so appreciate it.
Thank you for your leadership.
Next up is the Student Success Committee report. Thank you for that. And trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Chair Rail. The Student Success Committee met at 10:45 a.m. on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, in GB 137. For the Student Success Update, Shelley Allen provided an update on the essential practices of guided pathways. These include mapping pathways to student end goals, assisting students in choosing and entering a pathway, keeping students on track, and ensuring that students are learning. She highlighted changes to the new student orientation, which includes mandatory pre-enrollment and optional post-enrollment pieces. This new model ensures that students are exposed to important information. It introduces Canvas. It provides a synchronous format and important links for further research and an opportunity to connect with peers. The Plan My Classes tool encourages collaboration between counseling, success coaching, and career development. As part of ensuring learning, early momentum metrics monitor credits completed in the first year, course completion of Comp I and II, and college-level math in the first year, and enrollment in the Light My Fire course in the first term. Sheila Mopin discussed one affiliation agreement. The agreement was approved by the committee, and complete details can be found subsequently on the consent agenda of our packet. For the academic calendar, Jim Lane presented a revised 2024, 2025 academic calendar to reflect the addition of the Juneteenth holiday and the modification to the winter break start that has been previously discussed. The first day of winter break will be Monday, Monday, December 23rd. Complete details can be found subsequently on the consent agenda of the October 24th Board Packet. Barry Bailey presented some course modifications, course deactivations, program modifications, and program deactivations effective for the 2025-2026 year, academic year. The changes were approved by the committee, and again, complete details can be found subsequently on the consent agenda of the October 24th Board Packet. And that completes my report. Chair Rail.
Thank you so much, trustee Ratan. Any questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. Next on the agenda is the President's Recommendation for Action. First up is the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Hamel is not here. Are you giving that as well, trustee Cross?
No.
Okay. I can do that.
I can do it. Sorry.
I can absolutely do that. All right. The Treasurer's Report can be found on pages 13 through 22 of your Board Packet. And that contains the report for the month ended August 31st, 2024. An ad valorem tax distribution of $5.4 million was received from Johnson County in September and will be reflected in next month's report. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. And so with that, it is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month of August 2024, subject to audit and ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Chair Rail, seconded by trustee Cross. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. That takes us to the President's Monthly Report to the Board, and we look forward to hearing what you have to tell us this month, Dr. Corb.
Okay, just a couple of things. Mentioning enrollment, again, we've already talked about it once. You notice that you have a little bit different information on your report. Now, don't look at me like that, okay? So there's a reason for it. So the census data, our headcount was up 9.5%. And so that's our official count, and that's what Dick was referring to, because that's what went out in the official report. But you will remember that we talked about how we had moved the date for enrollment for our high school students, and that date had been moved up from October to September. So we saw our enrollment was higher compared to last year because of that, that enrollment change. So the, the numbers that you see now, 5.3% up in headcount, are closer to actual accurate numbers when we get everything in and we're looking at where do we really think we're going to end up at the end of the semester. If you look at the trend line, you can see that it leveled out according to trends. So we just saw that spike and then came back down. But 5.3% is still very, very good, but you will hear that number 9.5, and that's because that was our census date number. So that's the, the reason that there's a little bit of a, a difference there. Just wanted to point that out. Continuing education registration also going strong as of the 21st. They have 9,184 enrollments. For FY '25, that's 52% toward their enrollment goal for this year. So that's, that's good. I attended the Fall League for Innovation Board meeting that was hosted by Sinclair Community College in Dayton, Ohio. That was last week. Lots of discussion, lots of presentations and conversations around AI and how that is impacting higher education. And we know that we're on the front end of that, but the interesting thing is the conversations were all forcing us to think about AI as a new technology that we should embrace and learn and not fear and try to regulate because it's not going away, and we really need to be on the front end, end, and the leading edge of using it. So it's a focus for the league, and they, they're hosting the first of three learning summits that they're going to have where they pull people together, colleges, teams from colleges, pull them together to really talk about AI and how it can be used and how their colleges can develop strategies for using it and implementing it and teaching others about it and, and that kind of thing. So they have the first one in November. That's a little quick for people to kind of get together and, and get going. But there will be two more in the spring, and so maybe something that we would think about participating in as well. The league has also gone through and done a strategic plan, and in their strategic plan, they've identified three primary areas of focus. Innovation and transportation, and transformation, which is helping all of us stay relevant, embracing new and innovative technologies and other ways of doing work. Workforce solutions is another area that they're really focusing on, and a lot of that conversation had to do with micro credentialing, both through credit and non-credit pathways. So lots of conversation about that. And then resource development is another that they're, they have as a focus. And so really continuing to pursue partnerships with industry or grants, those kinds of things, in order to help bring in additional resources for us to continue to do the work that we do. The president's also had several discussions, and one was around, we all went around and talked about issues facing our organizations. Interestingly, very much the same kinds of things that we all talked about. I highlighted just three of them here that were definitely themes, but increasing competition from universities is something that, you know, we have talked about, and starting to offer associate's degrees, that kind of thing. Conversation that's going on all over United States, at least. I can't remember if our Canadian colleagues talked about that. Political legislative environments and different, different issues in different states, but they mentioned funding models and then governance or procedural changes that impact our colleges on different levels. And then being able to implement change at a pace that keeps our colleges relevant. And that's sort of tied back into that AI conversation, but also other things. I R E T is changing, and we have to be willing and ready to change in order to stay relevant. So those are the, those are just highlights from, from that meeting. It's always a great meeting, always a great time to get together and talk to people from other colleges, and you really, you really get a chance to learn what some other colleges are doing and, and that type of thing. I just want to remind you that the campus report to the board, which is that report that the whole campus puts together, is in SharePoint. It highlights so many activities and milestones and achievements. And I, I always hesitate to pull things from that because I feel bad about the things that are left behind. And so I just want to remind you that it's there. Lots of great information there. And then also the Friday email that comes out with the trustee highlights also, again, highlights some of the local campus and local things that are going on, as well as national issues and things that might impact us. That concludes my report.
Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for Dr. Corb? I would just kind of echo this discussion about AI. And of course, in the legal environment, there's a lot of discussion about that as well. And, and it's easy to fall into the fear trap. I read a statistic recently that they did some sort of blind study where they had ChatGPT take the uniform bar exam, and there was a 90% pass rate. And so immediately you start thinking, oh, my gosh, all of our students are going to cheat on their exams. And, but we're all using AI, and we just need to figure out how to embrace it and, and how to use it to make everybody better and to make things more efficient. And, and, and so it's an interesting conversation that certainly is not going away. So.
We had a presentation, yeah, we had a presentation by an organization that works with it. And, and she said, it's very similar to the internet. You know, when the internet was first introduced, people were like, oh, this is bad. This isn't going to be. And she said, AI is, is like that. It's a platform. Figure out what you're going to do and how you're going to use it, how you're going to use it right, in the right way, and that kind of thing.
I was going to say it's similar. When the personal computer or the internet came along, everyone was probably feeling very similar.
Yeah. But it's a, it's a very much a big issue and something that we have to try to figure out how to deal with it.
At the risk of putting us in the Wayback Machine, I remember when handheld calculators came out.
Oh, my gosh. You are not doing handheld calculators.
Because I remember, I remember my, my father spent $50 buying me a handheld calculator for eighth grade math. All it did was add, subtract, multiply, divide, and it had a percent key, which made me really cool. And the big hue and cry was, oh, my gosh, nobody's going to know how to do math. Well, here we are. I can add. So, but anyway. Trustee Cross, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I mean, I've only read two books, but I read another one the other day. It was on a biography of Ricky Henderson, and he was a football and baseball player growing up in Oakland. It just passed along, and he was such a phenomenal student athlete. He couldn't read very well, straight up, like in the seventies while he was in the Oakland minor league system. And he had to really just learn to write to write his wife back home in Oakland. And then for his Hall of Fame acceptance speech, he went to a community college in the Bay Area and had to learn how to give public speeches and presentations through this class. I think he audited or paid for a class. But I think my point is, at the end of the day, the human still has to learn to do and perform on their own. Or you may get, skip a step or have help with AI, but you still have to know it, I think. And so I just thought I'd offer that. I read a third book, so.
I would echo that sentiment that it also, I think, is going to open us up to people with disabilities, being able to do things that they have never been able to because they need assistance. And it allows them to be with peers in the workplace or in education in a way they've never been able to. And I saw, I think it was actually our faculty having a discussion about it this week and talking about one of the critical things that they can do is, and one of them is doing, is giving students AI-produced documents and having them evaluate and analyze it. Because part of, I think, what the big aha is about the internet and now AI is, we also, we have to be aware that we're consumers of something. So how are you still using the human component to make sure you're discerning truth and reality and that what the human can do and understand is much more complex than what AI, which is just grabbing everything, can do. I think that is a critical place where we here can provide that for our students, evaluating and analyzing it for its value and where it's not.
Yeah, absolutely. Great discussion. All right. Well, thank you for your report. That takes us to the new business portion of the agenda. I don't believe we have any new business. Next up is old business. I don't believe we have any old business. So that takes us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an opportunity for the Board to take up in a single motion, items of a fairly routine nature. You'll find the consent agenda on pages 23 through 41 of your Board Packet. And I'll first ask if anyone on the Board would like to pull anything from the consent agenda for separate discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by trustee Smith Everett. Do I have a second? Seconded by trustee Jennings. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett.
I always look at the HR report because when you've been here long enough, you start to see names. And so I just wanted to do a shout out to my former colleague in the ESL Continuing Ed Department, Vivian Pendergrass, who is retiring, who I taught with when I was in the adult ESL program. And I am both sad and elated to see that she is leaving and wish her well.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Yeah, there's a fly out.
I know. I'm like, there's a nap. Golly. Sorry. It wasn't about that.
I thought it was just picking on me because I was the only man.
No.
All right. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And that brings us to the executive session. To the best of my knowledge, we have no executive session. I'm hearing that echoed by our general counsel. And so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, wait, before I do that, I would be remiss in not mentioning that trustee Mitchell is currently representing the Board at the ACCT meeting in Seattle, along with our very own Caitlin Murphy. And I look forward to, I know Caitlin was busy today with some committees that she serves on. What a wonderful opportunity for us to have someone from our institution represent us in that capacity. And I'm sure that trustee Mitchell will come back with some great things from his experience there in Seattle. So we look forward to hearing back from him. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by trustee Smith Everett, seconded by trustee Ratan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
12 minutes. Put your costumes on and get up there.
Motion carries five to zero. Go trick or treat.